All right, welcome, everybody. Let's start off and we'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance and we'll get going. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the sun today. We thank you for the warmer weather. We thank you for protecting our community during the storm last night. It certainly could have been a whole lot worse. We are grateful for those that are out working on clearing the roads and we just pray for those that may have transportation problems that you will help them to get that worked out. We turn this agenda over to you, Father, and ask that you grant us wisdom and that you direct us according to your will. We pray for our first responders. We pray for our servicemen, our servicewomen, that you would protect them wherever they might be. We pray for this community, for each and every citizen. We pray for those that are running in office this month and we just pray that you would give them extra strength and stamina and help us to get through this election season with appropriate decisions made, Father. We just, again, ask your blessing upon this community. We pray for jobs for those that need them. We pray for growth and development that will strengthen and make this community a better place to live and we just pray that that will always be our objective, to improve the living conditions of this community and make this one of the best places to live around. Once again, we turn this agenda over to you in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and individual with liberty and justice for
All right, for the record, few minutes after 9:00 a.m., and this is our second meeting of the month of January 2018. Today is the 22nd of January and we will begin with item one, public comments, requests for agenda, non-agenda information in accordance with our Texas Open Meetings Act. Is there anyone that has any non-agenda items that they'd like to bring before the court at this time? If not, I will move to item number two, which is to consider and possibly approve the minutes from our last regular meeting on January 8th, a couple of weeks ago.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker makes that motion to approve that set of minutes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, Commissioner Riddle, anything to report on construction or repair projects?
The flagpole is straight.
He fixed it.
Fixed it.
I didn't, I didn't, when did he get that done?
One of those real cold days. He called and said he'd be there noon. He called early and he was, he's, he's talking, the problem with that pole is when it was put in, the sleeve was too big. David is the one that talked to the guy about this, about this. He sells flagpoles and he said, he puts them in and he said, so it, the sand got out. He asked me to have an electric plug and he said it'd be here at noon. So we found the extension cord, David did. Sure enough, he showed it about 10:30, he was through at noon. They started digging that sand out with a back, shop back and then he'd shim it up and of course I was over there by, on that side of it. I said, well, that's crooked back in the way. They didn't laugh or talk until I left, but anyway, they had it perfectly straight, packed back. He said he shimmied up, he said five or seven years it might get off again, but it should have been a smaller sleeve for this pole when they put it in eventually and he said, that's, it could get off again, but it'd be five or six, seven years. It could be one or seven.
I thought it would be much bigger job than that.
Well, since then, this is funny, I talked to Pat and he told me thousands of dollars, he had been talking to a builder, Mr. Dismuir, you know, because he was in the thing and he said, and I said, wait a minute, Pat, what did this? It was funny. He said, Mike, good, I told him what they did and he, he got a kick out of that.
Good deal. Thank you for handling that. I'm glad we came across that guy. What was his company name? TNT or something like that?
I don't know, but he sells flags and puts them in and he come by and David was talking to him and he told David that he, he put in flagpoles and so they, so David...
Glad he came along. All right, anything else to report?
No, the, the front of the building over there, I, I talked to Mr. Jones. Apparently, he's having serious problems with his arms. He's, he said he's got to wait now to May the 7th before they'll operate again on it. But anyway, I don't, that, the more, we talked about it in the last meeting, that possibly the, you know, the grants or something that the city's doing to make it look more like it, because it's just a difficult task, a lot of money to reface it and then how you're going, what are you going to put on it? I don't know. I don't think it's hurting anything like it is. I don't know why. We could see if somebody with the renewing, the downtown, the city, their projects to do it, can't include that in there. Somebody brought that up last week.
I think that, I think Steve Austin is lining up Jacob Hatfield or Mike Arons to address the court. Maybe we could ask them if they have thought about, you know, a look that they're looking for and maybe we can get them involved in the process. Ronnie Nairmore has not gotten back to me yet, but we'll, I'll try to get Jacob here at the next meeting, is what Stevens had told me he was going to try to do. So maybe there is some funds there that could help us to do that and maybe even some design services that they could bring.
They will help and assist in that and they will, they have somebody set aside to help show us the design or something to help coordinate everything downtown. So I'm sure they'll work with us.
Well, we certainly want to do something that is favorable for the Main Street Committee and goes along with what they're trying to achieve without costing an arm and a leg. All right, item number four, I'm not exactly sure this even needed to be on here, but the folks that are involved in the Farmers Academy Cemetery went to the effort of preparing a plat and this may or may not be a state requirement that they had to do. My guess is that it is, that you can't just expand a cemetery without having the state involved. So I guess we could construe this as a subdivision, but it is nothing more than an expansion of that. If you would like to look in any of these plans, it is a moderate expansion of the Farmers Academy Cemetery showing where they're going to put in, I don't know how many dozen more grave sites there, but they spent a good bit of money having that surveyed and just to help them meet whatever requirements they've got, I'd like to be able to sign off on this. If you would like to see this, well, in fact, I'd like for you just to take a look at it and see that this is a relatively small project here. It actually produces quite a few more plots, what do you call it, a grave plot? They're calling this Farmers Academy Cemetery Phase Number Three, if you're familiar with where Farmers Academy Cemetery is. One acre is the expansion that we're talking about here. I don't know how many grave sites that produces, quite a few.
Judge, I know they've expanded in other cemeteries, but as far as recording it here, it just records, because it's nonprofit and you have your association create it and then they, as far as I know, this is the first one we've done. Do you remember anything, Carl, that's even similar to this?
And I don't...
It doesn't pertain to surge, it doesn't pertain to water, it doesn't pertain, it's just grave sites.
And I don't, again, I don't think they were doing this to satisfy any requirement we put on them. I imagine it was a state requirement and this way they can say that, yes, we went through the proper channels. Here's a bill for $400 for Denny Land Surveying LLC where they had somebody to do the work.
Did I get a copy of this? Was that the ones that did the survey?
You want the copy of the bill?
Yes.
Sure.
Well, yeah, were they the ones that divided the plats up? I've had other cemeteries ask me, who did they contact or something?
This, this Denny Land Surveying is here in Mount Pleasant. I've not met this individual, but I've seen their truck around, so they're one of the few, or maybe the only one in town that I know of. I'm not sure that I do. They'll be with, they'll be with Joyce and Joyce, do you keep the little small size ones or you just use the large ones?
I just keep the large ones, I give them back to them.
Then, if you'd like, if you'd like to keep that one, go ahead and keep it. If you're going to toss it when we're done, let me put it back with their paperwork. Of course, this will be recorded and on file with the clerk. All right, are you all willing to grant this or sign off on that? Motion's made by Commissioner Fields to approve and sign off on this expansion of the cemetery. Again, that was a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And there are none. Item number four, considering possibly approve a resolution for the sale of property. This is another one of these, what's that? Did I say four? Item number five, a 1.5 acre tract, the William Cottle Survey. This was formerly struck off the tax roll. We've had a few of these in recent months and this is another one. Let me give you some of the details. This comes from Tim Taylor. Brett Charlton has offered $3,500 for this 1.5 acres. The judgment amount was $12,985. The taxable value for this property as listed is $14,945, which included a value of $10,681 for a mobile home which is now uninhabitable and needs to be torn down. So again, of that taxable value on the rolls of 14, 9, 10, 6 of that was for the mobile home. Needs to be torn down. This square tract located on Highway 67 east of Cookeville, the bid is from the adjoining property owner. To date, there's been no further interest in this lot. I recommend acceptance of this bid to place this property back on the tax rolls. 1.5 acres.
Judge, I make a motion, we approve it.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker to approve the acceptance of this bid from Brett Charlton, $3,500 on 1.5 acres east of Cookeville.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does this require all of your signatures? No, just my signature and you all will fill in the yays and nays. I'll get that back to you. Item number six, considering possibly approve the appointment of Nathan Prefort to serve as the Titus County Representative on the Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority, NET RMA. Hudson Old has represented us on this for nearly 10 years. These are reappointments every two years. Nathan, who I have talked to, has expressed interest in doing this and I believe that now's a good time to make a change. I believe in folks not serving forever and ever and I've talked to both Nathan and to Hudson about this. This would take effect February 1 of this year and be good for two years. That would end February 1 of 2020. So I need to report back to NET RMA what the decision of the court is on this.
Make a motion, make a...
Okay, I've got a motion, discussion?
I'll second.
Second by, motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite, second by Commissioner Parker. We have some discussion. Commissioner Fields?
I just wanted to say, and I had a chance to go back and see Hudson, talk to him just a little bit Friday and stuff, and I just wanted to thank him for his service and what he's done for us over the years. That is not an easy thing to deal with, I'm telling you, so, but I do appreciate Hudson and what he's helped, things he's helped try to get accomplished.
He is an unpaid position. It means a trip to at least Tyler every month and board meetings that last anywhere from an hour to four hours long. Major time commitment here, so yes, I express that same sentiment. Thank you to Hudson and appreciation to Nathan for being willing to consider this. Nathan is going into this with a full understanding of what the requirements are. I believe that he and Hudson share some same objectives here, specifically on improvements to 271 that will, of course, be a benefit to Prefort's. If we can utilize his influence and his talents there, I think that this will be a good, a good match. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving this appointment of Nate Prefort, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number seven, considering possibly approve a one-year lease option exercised by Workforce Solutions for the Riddle Street Building for the period March 1 of this year to February 28th of next year. Let me tell you where we are on this. This is a standard. This is our second one-year option that has been exercised. Just in review, back in July of 2013, we began essentially a 90-days-at-a-time lease with Workforce Solutions. We put into effect a three-year lease back on March 1 of 2014. At the end of that first three-year period, which was the original base period for the lease, we had a cost of living adjustment that came from specific governmentally provided tables and we increased that lease based on the increase in that cost of living based on those tables for those first three years. We are now making annual adjustments and this most recent annual adjustment, which includes comparing this current period's cost of living base with one year ago, results in a $90 a month adjustment to that monthly lease. This started off at $3,250. This most recent one goes to $3,428 and this is for a one-year option. They have a total of seven one-year options. This will be the second of those seven. And of course, we'll hope that Workforce Solutions continues to stay there. I believe that they're happy with the building. We are always responsive to their needs in the way of repair and maintenance and we've hardly had any problem there. I think that we had a, oh, what was she telling me about, a leaky window here the other day, but they've been very good tenants and this is, again, we enter into the fifth year of this agreement with them.
I make a motion, we approve the one-year lease option.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker for approval of this one-year option.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fields. And just as further, further letting you know, they have to let me know 180 days prior to the lease renewal date what their intentions are. They did do that back about four months ago, so Randy and I keep that on our, Randy Reed and I keep that on our schedule to be sure that they don't miss that and this is not something that they can just, you know, show up at the last minute and cancel. They need to give us six months' notice and they have always done that. So we've got motion and a second. All in favor of this one-year lease option, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. All right, we're into number eight, approve oral and written reports of county officials. I'm going to get to you. Thanks, sir. I thought I had a deadline with Carl, but it looks like we're way ahead of schedule, so I'm going to slip you in here right after this.
You won't be able to know the statements there is semi-annual payment from Text Dot last week. He's temporarily just put in, just five million, I guess. They all want the same, but it's five years old. They make payments on March 4th.
That's her bond payment, date, March 1.
You know, a lot of people don't understand or realize, but if you pay that payment twice a year instead of paying one huge amount, that four point, well, it's about four and a half million, Carl. We don't have to pay that, we don't have to pay that interest on that four and a half million. We were the only entity that got that deal. Everybody else didn't want you to pay that. So that helped.
I'm lost.
Well, instead of paying eight point or nine million a year, one payment a year, we pay twice a year. We get half that amount every six months.
And?
We don't have to pay interest on that four and a half million dollars for...
That bond interest changes like that?
Interest on the bond.
We get the money, so they're paying us the eight point four million in August for once a year. They pay us four point two million of it now, so we've got the money available for the bond payment. It has nothing to do with how much interest?
No. But you're not paying interest on that four and a half million dollars.
Well...
Because it's paid. It's not paid at the end of the year.
Let me give you an analogy. If sometimes your mortgage company will encourage you to take your monthly mortgage payment and instead bust it up into two pieces and pay one, you know, every, on the 15th and on the 1st and you end up saving a little bit of interest. I don't know that it's a huge savings to us, but it is some kind of savings and when you're talking about the kind of debt that we're talking about, yes, it, by the end of this deal, it is a benefit to us to be able to make semi-annual payments. That's how it was originally set up. That's how our bond payments are made. We receive 4.2 million dollars every six months and we have a bond payment that's, one's bigger than the other and the big one is in spring or is it in the fall? The big one's, and it's, how much is it? Six, seven, six, seven million? Okay, so again, it's, it's more than we receive from Text Dot and then the one in the fall is smaller, but the difference in the payments and what we receive is serviced by that increased debt service that was voted on by the taxpayers. Motion is made for approval by Commissioner Parker. Second is made by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carl, do you have any budget amendments?
No.
Okay. If you'd like to go, then feel free to go. What I'm going to do at this time, since there are no budget amendments, take a little break here and let me explain. I'll take full blame for this and the fact that we don't have Roger on our agenda here. That was a mix-up in understanding that I didn't clarify with my trusted assistant, Carolyn, and next week we will have Roger back in his normal place. But because of the discussion that I thought we might have today specifically on complaint by one of our landowners, I wanted to be able to be sure I got Carl out of here on time. So at this time, even though this is not on the agenda, but neither is it an action item, I'll ask that Roger give us his report.
Do the treasurers report before that or wait?
No, I'm going to wait. I want Cheryl to hear this.
We'll discuss as we're side cutting. One of the things that's got any question or even the main question was our width of the roadway. Now, what I've been told, we've got 50-foot of roadway overall, 25-foot on each side of the center line. Is that correct?
Say again?
We got 50-foot of roadway on our county roads, 25-foot from the center line?
I don't think they're all the same, are they? Some of them are different.
No, some of them are different.
Some roads are different than the other county roads.
Do we know what our roadways are?
What, what you got? These roads were basically just old dirt roads back in the 1800s. The laws that were passed and everything, it was used by the public for 10 years, considered the public's road. They didn't put a width or anything like that on it. So you may have these old county roads, they may not be but 30 feet wide and then others may, that's the reason we set up rules and regulations back in the late, it was '88, '89, long in there. For any future roads, they had to meet these standards. Up until that time, there was no standard that you had to meet on the county road.
So we, we don't have a known roadway width for any of our county roads?
Do what now?
Do we know what the roadway width is on our county road?
Well, it's, it's 50 if it's, if it's, no, it's 40 if it's a dead end road, it's 50 if it's a through road.
That's the minimum?
That's the minimum.
And some could be more than that?
Yes.
But as a minimum, if you wanted to be safe in only cutting what was our roadway, 50 feet would be a safe number?
Yes.
And then you said 40 feet on a, on a, what, a dead end?
Dead end road. Now, all future roads after, I think it was '89, had to have a roundabout. We have a lot of dead end roads that you don't have a roundabout, you have to pull in somebody's yard to turn around.
All right, so on dead end roads, we've got 40-foot of roadway and on any through road, we've got 50-foot of roadway?
That's right. That's the minimum for any future roads.
What about present roads?
Well, it's, if you've got a dead end road that's, it's 30 feet, old fence roads and stuff have been established there, it's going to stay 30 feet because that's, that land was given basically to the county for public roads, but it is a public road.
So we don't have a known width?
Not with the old roads, you do it for all the new roads.
So in a situation, let's say that's 30 feet, he's only got 30 feet because you're in between two rows of fence, obviously, we're not going to tear down the fence and expand beyond that, but in the absence of something that prevents you from going wider than 40 feet, would it be safe? I, you know, he's asking a real good question. He needs to know so that he makes sure he's not cutting on, on people's property that he's not supposed to be. Is 40 feet and 50 feet in these two examples a good rule of thumb?
That's what we've always went by. Now, I think it was '89, we passed rules and regulations, any future county roads will meet this standard and it will be...
Yeah, same here county roads, 50 county roads. How do we, how do we know what kind of roadway width we have on the road?
What I've always done is just stay with the fence line.
Yeah.
And I've had people that like my road to be a little bit wider and they clean the fence row off and they move the fence back. Then I've had others to move the fence towards the road, so...
Yes. Yeah, I've seen that a lot of people.
If they, if they come past, if they go past that fence line, I tell them they need to either put it where the old fence was at or back it up some.
Can I ask a question? They come out and survey, did they go to the center of the road still for their survey or did they?
Yes.
They go survey roadway through county, county roadway, does anybody have...
Most of these surveys are going to go, if it hits this, on this side of the road, one property owner and this side of the road, one property owner, it goes to that center of the road. When we closed roads and there was people on each side, the coal rights to that road went to the center of the road and the people that owned the land, adjoining land, got the royalties. The county got nothing. the royalties, the county got nothing.
Okay, so if it's recently surveyed, and they have a survey state that's pretty ways off the road, what is that survey state?
Be for the landowner, I assume.
So, it's not at the center of the road, yeah? It's over on the side of the ditch?
There, it depends. If, if it's land been handed down through generation, generation, the deeds are probably gonna call to the center of the road. Where, uh, where I live, right now, my deed, it shows the whole road, 'cause that was one whole place at one time. The deed shows that I go to the center of the road, but I do know that land was donated to the state of Texas to get a farm-to-market road put in there. It wasn't, they didn't buy it, they gave it to them, just to get a road. So, my deeds called for that, but I know that road is not mine. And if they ever close it, it'd go back to mine.
Do you know the right away is though?
I know where the, what right away is, yes. Like, like I said...
Mark was out inside your property?
Yes.
And there's also right away maps at the state.
Okay. What, in, in ninety, it was either ninety, uh, two thousand, two thousand and one, somewhere in there, the state set up a program. Do you declare all roads county roads? We have a list of those county roads declared by, that we declared county roads. If they weren't the county road, they were no longer on our list. As a county road.
Did you have a right away limit declared?
No, the state did not declare that. It's just the county road didn't exist.
Yeah.
I see some of those roads, they go back to the eighteen eighties. Old dirt roads at one time. And there was no designated, people just put fences up, and from fence to fence, it was considered public roads.
What rule of thumb did you always follow that you could pass on to Roger, since he's asked a good question here? He wants to cut the right away, but he sure doesn't know?
I'd go from, from fence to fence, to maybe the county right away. Well, then you would have to look to your right and left, look down, see if you can see a fence line, and guess what it's saying. There's no set feet in that. These old county roads were, all of them were donated by the landowners. That was the rule that they went by. Now, the cutting, I can tell you this, you gotta really work hard on keeping, I sharpen those blades every day, maybe every four hours, get you a clean cut.
Yeah, basically, you gotta push all the animals, they don't do now. You'd have to cut it with some sort of saw, maybe. Equipment we have will remotely come.
Well, there, that's gonna be a tough, this is, there's except, I can tell you, I can tell you that there's a road just north of my house on the, probably the third most traveled road in my precinct, that I doubt if it's fifty feet, and then I doubt if it's, uh, it's above the, above the, the road is down, and it's got huge trees right after that road, and I, and I, and I say you got it on a seal coat. You'd spend a million dollars before you order a seal coat that road. So, it's a, and I bet it's not fifty feet. Clears between fence and fence, it's a, it's a ditch.
Yeah, if we all had plenty of roads, we could never wipe it twenty-fourty-five or twenty-one.
Well, let me tell you what I did, going down to Bonds Catfish down there. As you go past the first few houses, the road is, it's naturally, it's low tide, but it's probably around forty, fifty feet. It's a dead end road. When Bonds built down there, that was all being developed and everything, the landowner on the right side, as you go down there, as you get past those first two or three houses, I went to talk to him about purchasing some more land for the county road. It was one lane, that's all it was, one lane. You had, this one had to get in the ditch, and this one had to get ditched, get back. Went and talked to the landowner, and he said, "I'll make you a deal. I will give you the land. You get as much land as you need, just to take care of the road and the ditches in there, don't look at any bar, build me a new fence, and I'll give it to the county." So, I went to Tim Tyler, checked with Tim, and, uh, that was just, basically, we built the fence to get the land and make the road water. Now, that's one situation that we did.
No paperwork?
Yeah, we got, it's, Tim did it. But, I mean, we didn't buy it or anything, it's just an agreement that we get the land, what we needed, and, uh, go from there. And it worked out good, the landowner's happy, and we got a wider road to meet the criteria. Because when you've got the kind of traffic they're having on that road, you got to have a wider road. But it worked out, you just, you may have to go see people and talk to them, see what they do. A lot of people would, to, uh, would maybe do that.
Yeah, they probably would, some of them would. Of course, there's gonna be some of them out there that don't have, no compensation requirements. How do you prove what we got in the first place, that you don't have any requiring? Just gonna go by the fence line and stuff?
Go by the fence lines, like, we had to, that, those roads are so old, that's all we have. And the state has declared those roads now as county roads from fence to fence. That was done in two thousand, two thousand and one. Any roads that don't have a road number on it, it's not part of the county road system, what I always do is give it a number if it's got more than one house down that road, private road, that, we put PVT, put the sign up, and that way, it's a private road, it's not a county road.
So, if there's any old fixed post or anything out there, just don't go by, don't go past it?
What I would advise you to do is to talk to John Morik on that. If, if we're looking at setting some type of policy up or something, let him do some research on it, he, he may find something that I don't know about.
Yeah, I was kinda expecting there'd be a uniform right away with Joe.
I believe it was, I'm not sure, but you, uh, get Josh to look it up, but... I think it was eighty-eight. Anything from then on, we do have rules for it. Anything before eighty-eight, I don't believe there's anything that we're playing to that now, you know, unless somebody had just come up and gave you the land and told you, "Build a road," or they would build a road. There was no spec set up for them how to build a road. We took a lot of bad roads over, that developers, what developers were doing, going out here being, building dirt roads and not finishing the road. And when they sold everything, they were gone. And the people had to come up with the money to build the road, and that's back in, I believe it was eighty-eight, but Josh, if you would, try to look that up and, and see if we'd get that and, and put it in Roger's box. But before then, there was no set rules or regulations how to widen the road ahead
Alright, so, basically, just based on the appearance of our property, fence, posts?
Don't look at me.
There's no rules or regulations, I'm just saying, what the old fence was, I, I'd just tell people, "You gotta keep that fence, same fence line, you can back it up, but you can't move it forward."
Roger, what I have done is the foam pedestals, if there's foam pedestals down that, that land?
Yeah, I think foam pedestals kinda move it out.
Well, some of them, some of them do, some of them do, I'll, I'll agree with that, but that's, that's one thing that, if there's not a fence there, that I kinda went by was, was the foam pedestal.
Does the county association counties not have any insight at all?
Yeah, they'll have a lot of insight. These guys are going to school next month, why don't, why don't y'all make it a point to get some better clarification for Roger, 'cause I, I know they teach this stuff.
Yeah.
You can call Bob or Jim Appson, they can give you...
I'd call TAC, let those high-dollar guys alone, but now, Bob, Bob can tell you, and Jim can certainly tell you, but I think TAC's our go-to resource that we pay money to. But again, why don't y'all get some practical input for him when you go to school next month? You know, I, I know that we, I know that counties have had to deal with this, and I know there's some definitions, I just don't know what they are.
Alright, sounds good. Maybe we can get something from them, some concrete, some right away.
I'll try to find out something.
That's gonna be a scary time, so, aren't y'all saying utilities can actually locate on their right ways?
They do.
Yeah, and do we know it's our right away too?
That's something I had never found out either.
You know, you don't know, but that, that, to me, that's a good job. It's cut back, you can see, it's made it safer. And I, and I know they're looking at, so, well, you know, that, that's rough, and that's, that's cut and stuff, but, uh, you might try, sharpen those blades every four hours, and there, instead of every few days, and, uh...
These pictures...
...just sweep it off, and this spring, when everything comes out, it'll look nice.
I'll tell you, I, this, this machine is a, they stay broke all the time. I don't know why we don't do like the state does, cut these trees back to the fence line, if that's the right away, and get rid of this. This is extremely expensive. I mean, those, they machines cost a fortune. I don't know, I looked at one that they bought in eighty, I mean ninety, no, I don't know what year, but anyway, the machine costs like fifty thousand, forty-eight thousand, and the side cutter costs thirty-five thousand, and they stay in the shop twenty-four, twenty hours out of twenty-four, they stay in the shop, they stay broke down all the time.
Yeah, it's hard, we got four of them, it's hard to keep them all running at the same time.
You can't, you can't keep, yeah, and I, I just think we ought to start a program of cleaning the right aways off. And, and this is, and it's, I don't, I don't, it's not a good system.
Clean all the right away off?
I'm not talking about suddenly, but I'm talking about eventually, we should approach it that way from a long-term standpoint. Just my idea, a thought, it, you know.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna speak on behalf of a landowner who sent me these pictures. This is a Mrs. Hinton, um, I think she emailed these same pictures to you and to Commissioner Parker and to me, and she's pretty upset, kept sending me emails, um, and I was finally able to talk to her on the telephone last Friday about this. So, these are pictures that she took, and she is disappointed for multiple reasons. She did say that we got on her property. She feels like this is a really messy job that really hurt the appearance of her property, and left a lot of ruts in what she calls her property, but sounds like it was probably the right away. But what I'd like to be able to do is to respond to Ms. Hinton, and I know Commissioner Parker would like to be able to respond to her, and, so that we have a clear understanding of just what is our, uh, what is our standard, uh, performance here? You know, if, if I hired you for my landscaper, I'd, I'd fire you if I looked at this, but we're not in the landscaping business. So, what is a reasonable expectation? And, and I know if you go into an area that has not been mowed to the proper wa, uh, right away points, and you go in and you have to cut into, you know, trees that are six inches round, you know, it's definitely gonna have a different appearance. You know, she additionally complained that we didn't pick up the, the debris and the limbs that were left, and that it, again, that it just butchered the landscaping there. I don't believe her house is on this property, but it is family property, and I do feel like we owe her some kind of an explanation, whether it's one that she wants to hear or not. I'm here to speak on her behalf. I wanted you all to see these pictures, and let's give Roger some guidance. If this is okay, and we just have to get a landowner to accept that, then we need to be honest with her. If this is not okay, then we need to tell Roger and Phillip, you know, we want a higher standard here. I don't know what the correct answer is.
I've got several pictures we took. If you look right here, this is the area she was... There's a survey marker, it looks like it's on a right away mark at Parkview Corner here. So, if that is the right away, and we didn't get on it, if you go by the post out here, and her, her post is left out here, and some trees and stuff along in front of their property, then we would be aware.
So, the, the question one, did we stay on our right away for this job? I believe that the explanation is yes, we believe we were clearly authorized to cut our right away because we did not get on the landowner's property.
These are the ruts you're talking about. Up to maybe three or four foot off the...
Is this in front of a house, this just the right away?
That's in front of the old house up ahead of there.
Okay.
There's a, there's an old abandoned house there, I think, where that picture is that you're looking at now, Mike?
And, babe, that's not off the road.
Yeah, keep in mind, whenever they did cut that, I mean, we are very cautious of mowing in front of people's houses, and, you know, very considerate of that, uh, because of the blisters and stuff. Whenever they mowed it, the sedge grass and everything is up, um, and then we went over there and talked to them, and then, and shredded it down.
Okay, if you look at this picture, now, let me get away with it.
Now, there's a telephone pedestal.
Here's, yeah, there's telephone pedestal, here was that survey marker back here. Now, she's got some post that are right up here behind this tree. So, if you went by the post that were in her front yard, then we probably got off the right away.
Fence post or telephone post?
Uh, fence post, old fence post.
This one is going around a corner, and the fence is a long time gone, so, to get a clear fence line is, is just really an obstacle to hold around that.
And, and part of what was cut was, uh, privet hedges, those, those old privet hedges that will grow back immediately, uh, and, uh, they, uh, they were cut back, you know, quite a bit. That's, from what I could see, that was what she was complaining about, was those privet hedges. And if you don't keep those things cut back, from one spring to the next, they will be grown back in, out in the road again.
Here's a good example of what privet hedges do, because we cut the nose of the road from this one. You can stay up and stick it up into the roadway.
Yes. There is a hard to pass by road. If we don't keep them cut back, they'll be across the road in two days.
And this is what the roadway looks like right here.
Those people getting down the road if they had an RV?
They did have an RV, so they weren't that far.
You know, but other landowners down there might have an RV.
This one was a dead end road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that one. Yeah, we get complaints of RVs, uh, one of my influences from the school bus.
Yeah.
They have to, they have to lie to the top of there. The masses from the Chapel Hill School, his bus manager, he called me, and he said, "Look like a big cat, he went up on top of all of our buses, and just scratched some rubber around." So, I got complaints in Chapel Hill, I got complaints in Harford, about, the school buses getting all scratched down, they don't have rubber to pull over.
Well, here's the thing about it, once you get it cut back, then, uh, this next year, you're not gonna have to cut three and four and five inch limbs, you're gonna have the small stuff, it's real easy. Once you get it cut back, it's gonna be much better. If you, if you'll keep it cut every other year, you'll just have small limbs to cut back. It won't look like this butcher job here. This is, uh, that has not been cut in a long time.
And so, that's why it's basically a trap for, if it hadn't there been the cut, it would have been a while.
Been, been a while since that road was cut.
It will look better. It would look better.
This spring, you ever, all that stuff, it'll be, it'll be just green and all the after
But where we had lots of stuff on the road or something like that, we'd just take the sweeper and sweep it off, as you say.
Do we expect Rogers to sweep these roads after
Well, that's
I wouldn't think that bad.
If it's a road that hasn't been done in a long time, and there's a lot of that, that bigger stuff and whatnot in there, I don't think it would be a bad idea to do it, but, I mean, he's got one sweeper and four hundred and twenty miles of road to do, so he, you know, he can't run, put one person on the sweeper to run.
Yeah, chase four side cutters.
Yeah, to chase four side cutters.
Most of the roads, you know, like that, you know, but some of them are not that bad. We'll have to come to side cutting.
Have you, have you had to cut any mile road back?
Not too far. You know, most of them's got the privet hedges, if you, if you, if you only cut back five, six foot or so, you can cut
It's gonna be right out.
Yeah, road to three foot.
Yeah.
That's one of my biggest problems is the privet hedge.
Cause I had a road like that, and she complained about it, and now it's, it's clear, and it's, it's spring hit, you couldn't hardly cut, let your soul, but you don't have to worry about it, when you get over the ditch hit, the limb hit
Considering the size of vehicle is probably
That's right.
I wouldn't want you to see it. I got But I don't think it marks a purpose. It's marked the park between current and neighbors.
Or they, yes, yes, that other house to the north and western.
Fence posts more out there, trees and stuff, more their apartment. So that's nice and placing, that would be
They were maybe looking at doing, you remember them saw cut.
Them things are there, they grow like, they grow like
Oh, yeah, but I'll say, if they're not trimmed back.
See, it's here, if they trim back, it's clean there.
Now, then two cars can move over on a small road like that, they've got room to get over and get around each other without
But these, this here had been done a long time. That's why it makes sense, you know, with these, entering cars, they will run over.
Let, let me bring this up, me and Mr. Rivers just talking about this. And I went to you last year and made a statement when you were with Tex dot. I really like what saw. You talking about, you can go out one twenty seven, start the other side of the two seventy-one relief round, and go all the way to Monson Bridge, before you hit the Monson Lake, and look at those sites. It's clean, it's cut, they chipped everything, they had a chip and crew, and they had saws. They wasn't these, what I call bush-holes, side bush-holes.
Are these, are these extras?
Yeah.
Can Jimmy have?
But that's something Roger, we might look at, and I'm, George, I'm telling you, really cuts clean. It, it, I was really excited about that, cause you could finally see.
Yeah, it's, it's nice, it means, you still get complaints about it though, okay? You're gonna get complaints anytime you look at a tree.
Did you have any complaints on that road?
Yeah, we get complaints every time we, every time we move in.
Well, I just
You get the same complaints, you know, the same with which the trees.
Well, you can see also, safety's a factor here too. But it, it cuts a lot cleaner than what we do.
Saw blade?
Saw, it's just saw. I mean, it just goes straight up.
Well, if you can't shred what you're cleaning, the road
No, it's all gotta be picked up. If you cut it like that, it's all gotta be picked up.
Double the price of what we
So that one crew out there, you're gonna have to have a second crew put it in the chipper.
Yes.
And you're probably gonna get mad.
Yes. It's on the right of way. Then we get mad at them because of these piles, so we might go back and spread it out.
But I think this spring, you're gonna see this come out and stuff, and then
Beautiful.
Then you can, it, it's easy to keep up once you get it cut back.
I like, you know, to be able to cut back like six or eight foot. It ain't about pulling out of the driveway, or pulling out of the county road intersection. The distance from the nose of your car back where the driver sits is about six foot, but you still want another couple of foot out in front of you before you stop. So if you cut them back six or eight foot, with most cars, we can't, because we've got trees in that six or eight foot line.
Fence trees out there.
Yeah, so, but it's nice to have six or eight foot, for me, to play it out, since you got a good side. If you don't, you gotta encroach your car out into, into the paint.
And I know this is a lot of footwork, but I'd take a lot of time, and I'd stop like people had a corner, and I'd ask them about cutting that back. There's no fence or anything there, just for safety purposes. I don't think we've ever had anybody tell us we could, and I've had people say, it's okay to cut right up at that fence, but don't cut anymore. Then I've had other people say, can you cut the top of the fence road off?
Well, sometimes you gotta do it, cause you can't see otherwise.
Okay, Jimmy, there's your job, we'll see how good of a diplomat you are in making Ms. Hinton, you know, at least answering her questions and explaining. You, you, I don't, I think we're far enough apart, she's not gonna agree with our policy, and we're not gonna agree with her policy, but I do believe she's, do a response. Rogers talked to her, I've talked to her, and I'll get you her phone number if you'd like that.
We suggested maybe Texas County, cleaning some of that up. And
I think next year, we'll
All right.
It'll be just green as
Okay, well, I appreciate it, and I understand the things that you're battling. Anything else you wanna report to us? And we'll plan on having your workshop at the end of the next meeting, first meeting in February, is that right?
What were the eleven roads that you were talking about? What I'm trying to ask is what precinct was hit the hardest last night?
One.
One, okay.
We had trees down on fourteen sixty-five, fourteen sixty-eight, fifteen fifty, thirty-two ten, eleven fifty, sixteen seventy-three, fourteen thirty-five, sixteen eighty, thirty-two ninety, seventeen eighty, and sixteen thirty-five.
Now, what, what'd you do? You cut trees, or you, trees that need to be cut?
Trees that fell last night.
Oh, last night, yeah.
It's kind of that little tornado alley that they, they pretty well go down every time.
Yeah, I was surprised we didn't have
Yeah.
Southwest Florida County, I really thought we'd be working out
Well, it usually comes across, Wentzboro, when it comes across that direction, it'll hit up there, John Beach Bottom and, and Maxman Bottom back through there, and then it goes on across the bridge chapel up there, and then it heads towards Allison.
Most of this is
Do you want a list of those roads, anything like that?
That'd be great.
If we could make, or let him shoot a picture of that with his phone or something like that. Anything else?
Now, just find out what you can
And as a reminder, before y'all go to Austin, or is it A&amp;M this year? A&amp;M, we'll have, our first meeting of the month of February will be the workshop to discuss road plans for the next year or two.
Yeah, when we do the meeting, what I'd like to come out of the meeting is, is a list of roads that we wanna have, do silco trip and silco down, at least ten miles over, and a prior type order will be more than that. But I'd like to get up to twenty miles, so we can start looking next year too. If we did more than ten miles this year, we'll do more than ten. Hopefully we can. I've got, I still put the wrong group on that now, and stop.
We're gonna talk about this at the workshop.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Roger. Phillip. All right, let's move on into our next item here, which is item number nine in our treasurer's report.
Treasurer.
I heard a heck of a racket, but it didn't open all those roads, as you mentioned, they're close to
When that thing was going up there, I said that thing headed to your house.
I can make a motion, I mean
Motion's made for approval of the treasurer's report by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor of approval, say aye. And we had no budget amendments for item number ten. Item number eleven is signed pay orders and approved payment of the bills.
Make motion, we pay our bills.
Commissioner Parker makes a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Applewhite seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number twelve, final item, closing comments. I was fortunate to be out of town last week when y'all had the brutal, brutal cold, and thank you all for dealing with that. Just as a reminder, you know, it's been a while since I've had to make a call on whether or not to make any adjustments to county hours, and I did the best I could based on the information that I had, and took a lot of guidance from Paul Lindsey, who was kind of my eyes and ears, and from Chief McCray, and we decided to go with a ten o'clock opening on that Tuesday, and then regular hours on Wednesday. And I will continue to try to maintain the same policy. If I'm hearing some encouragement by people that are in the emergency business and first responder business, I put a lot of weight on what they say, and that is what I did. I don't trust my opinion, but if I don't have significant evidence of a need to change hours, I'm not going to change those hours. Each department head can always make individual decisions, what to do with their individual employees. I think all of you received a memo from Carl reminding you that unless the county judge does make a determination to change the hours, then it is up to you to work those hours out with your employees, in which case they will have to take, what are, what are their options? Comp time, sick time, vacation time for those hours, even if it is a purely weather-related event, and they are snowed in and iced in, and at the end of a road, and they couldn't get out with a bulldozer, whether you deem it fair or not, that is the county policy.
Did I want you to follow that policy?
Did you check the Tac before you made that decision on that? As far as where they have to take
I did that back eight years ago. That was one of the first things that hit me when I came into office about two weeks after I started, and so I did do some research back then, and the policy that we are under is appropriate policy. And I probably got a little bit liberal with the use of closing the county back eight years ago, but I'm not going to do that again. So, again, it, it does seem unfair when somebody lives three blocks from the courthouse and can easily get to work versus somebody that lives twenty miles away and has to cross a bridge, and has to come down a forty-foot wide road that's, that's iced in. But nonetheless, those will have to be dealt with by that department head and by that employee, because I can't close the county offices, you know.
Right, well, that's definitely my deal. My thing is, is because with us, there's not an issue, we can't, we don't have to be there, and that's what I'm saying. As far as about forcing them to take, because when I was at one of my sheriff's training schools, and they're talking about liability and stuff, there was actually a lawsuit on that where they, they closed two hours earlier, or two hours later, something caused me to go to weather, and
They closed two hours later? You mean they opened two hours later?
I do remember, I do remember, there was a lawsuit over it, and, and the lawsuit asked us in favor of the elected officials' decision themselves, where they paid them, they didn't make them take vacation, they said to pay them. But now, that could have changed. But now, with us, if it matters, we're gonna be there off the far line. If they can't drive, they're early, early in the fall, because we can't shut down. The sheriff's
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's why I wanted to look at as far as like court rulings, or anything that'll happen.
Whenever the court is responsible, they have to, they can do that research, and get the Tac, and see what the best policy is on that.
Good reply, and it's something that does need to be discussed. It's been a while since we've had weather like that, but it sure makes it tough for a department head in dealing with an employee that's having a hard time getting to work. But each of you received that same memo that I received from Carl, and until this court decides to do something different, that's the policy that we will go with. But things will have to be pretty bad for me to say, we're officially changing the opening hours or the closing hours of the, of the county. But again, you as a department head or an elected official, I would always use, you know, prudence before you say, no, I'm sorry, you've gotta be here at work. I don't know what the clear answer is, I will leave that up to you.
Well, we, you know, it was bad. The roads were bad. You just touch that gas and you'd start going
For some, for some, they were no problems. For some, they were bad. It was, it was a mixture.
Well, I came all the way to town, and it was bad in town. You had to be careful, because you, I think the two hours delay was, was needed badly. I think it was a good decision.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to hear some of your input on this. Commissioner Riddle, what do you think? You think we do anything different than we're doing?
I thought it was just, just right. Just right for overnight. It was, I didn't have any, I mean, a little trouble, I think we needed to wait and see. I think it was a good call, right on time, right on target.
Again, if any of y'all feel the need to discuss this and make changes, I think the only changes that you would consider would be, in a case where you have an employee that cannot get to work because of legitimate dangerous reasons, should they be forced to take comp time, vacation time, sick time, or do you give special allowances for some and not others? And then you would get into that gray area of, well, my coworker didn't have to come in, and, you know, I had a patch of ice in front of my driveway, why should I have to come in? And I'm not gonna get into that. I know I'm
That's making the call, it's like whatever decision's made, it's consistent every time that we did. And even said like the virus, you know, Sharon came in, she was the only one that came in that day. So, I mean, I, I work Sunday and Monday, but not everybody has the luxury to do that. So, it's like, with Sharon that did come